Why don't we go ahead and get started? Welcome and thank you to the first work session for the 2021 budget. It goes without saying that we are meeting in a very unprecedented way in time, but that seems to be the way of doing things these days. So I appreciate you not only having the time, but making the effort to be here in this format as well. So we're, tonight's the first night for the budget, the 2021 budget, and hopefully all of you are either able to pick it up by paper or electronically, whichever your preference was. And if you didn't get a copy of it, you know, make sure you reach out to Jay or I or Kathy and we'll make sure that you get that so you have it available to you as we go through the process. Maybe just as a way of introduction, it shouldn't surprise any of us that this was a particularly challenging budget to prepare. And of course, this is due to the combination of COVID-related impacts that happened in our local and state and national economics, our loss of revenue, we had increased expenses, as well as the uncertainties surrounding how to provide city services safely for our employees and our citizens and what levels of services were going to be required. These pandemic impacts, coupled with the community demand for addressing issues related to social justice and racism, as well as looking at alternative policing strategies, resulted quite frankly in the most challenging budget that I ever prepared. Fortunately and thankfully, I've got a great team that through shared sacrifice rose to the occasion and the challenge and addressed those issues while maintaining a willingness to provide the resources needed for our employees to deliver basic services for the community. And just as the budget team was getting ready to explore more extreme measures to balance this budget, because as you all know, we had a pretty big gap to fill, we were notified by Group Health Cooperative that rather than a 2% increase in our insurance rates for 2021, they were proposing a 1% decrease. This 3% swing, probably more than anything else in our insurance rates, saved our general fund in excess of $200,000 and it allowed the remaining gap to be closed. I don't know of any other community in the state of Wisconsin that realized a 1% decrease in their health insurance rates for 2021. And this was only possible through the creative approaches of our health insurance products and the way we've been working with Group Health and the commitment of all the city employees to our wellness initiatives and the other cost-saving strategies. So thank you to everybody that was involved with helping make that happen and, you know, controlling our claims, which were able to result in a reduced premiums. I'd also like to thank Christine Basom and Jason Roloff. And although Jay and I are going to be presenting this budget to you this evening, it's Christine and Jason that are responsible for making sure that all the last-minute budget changes are reflected in the document that we're going to be reviewing and that everything ties out and balances. There is an incredible amount of work that goes into making that nice-looking book that you have in front of you and making all those numbers tie between the different funds. So just a big thank you to Christine and Jason for their work in making this come together. This is the final budget that I'll be submitting to you as a city manager, and I believe that it strikes the appropriate balance of city council priorities while still maintaining the high quality of services and quality of life that our residents of Eau Claire expect from their local government. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Jay, and he's going to go over a high-level overview and some of the highlights of the 2021 City of Eau Claire City Manager Proposed Budget. Jay, off to you.
Thanks Dale. So just a couple of housekeeping items for everybody. First of all, a question came up earlier about, you know, displays in WebEx since we are using our cameras really for the first time. There are a couple of different displays that you might want to take a look at. If you hover towards the upper right-hand corner of the screen, you'll see that there is what's called an active speaker video view, a active speaker and thumbnail, and then a grid view. The grid view is kind of like Hollywood Squares, that's what we kind of refer to it, puts everybody up on the screen and you'll see everybody who's got their camera activated. The active speaker and thumbnail will give you a bigger picture of the active speaker and then thumbnails along the bottom of the screen of the other people who are on the call. And then the active speaker video view just gives you a speaker, excuse me, just displays the active speaker. One other thing that can happen is when I'm sharing my screen, which I will be, at a certain point, is that you'll get thumbnails across the top of the screen. And because there are so many people on the call, there's not enough space to fit all the thumbnails on the one screen. So sometimes you might want to scroll over to the right or to the left to be able to see the person who's speaking because it won't always pull the person who's speaking over onto the screen. So just a couple of housekeeping kind of display items there. Also, as we do during regular council meetings, you know, if you have a question, please use the raise your hand feature. I'm running this meeting from home, so I'm doing what Terry usually does in the council chambers, so, you know, I will, you know, try to keep my eye for the hands that might go up and mute and unmute people as appropriate. So I will do my best keeping an eye on that as we go through the presentation. So at this point, I am going to share my video with you and, oops, and...
It's never good when the presenter says, "oops."
Yeah, yeah. Can you all see my video now?
Yes, you mean your PowerPoint?
Your PowerPoint, yes.
Yep.
Yep, okay. So as Dale said, this is the 2021 Proposed Operating Budget, and this, as he indicated, this was a challenging budget for us to put together. Just want to hit some of the highlights of that budget. First of all, we've got some enhanced program services and staffing in the proposed budget. That includes an Equity Diversity and Inclusion Coordinator. This is going to be a position that is shared with Eau Claire County. This will be a city employee, so it shows up in our budget and in our FTE tables as a full FTE, but we will be sharing one-half of that position with Eau Claire County, just like we do with our purchasing manager. In addition, we have included within the Police Department a Co-Response Coordinator. What we are planning on doing is taking a vacant detective position and converting that to a Co-Response Coordinator. The expectation is that this individual will not only be available for response to work with the Eau Claire Police Department, but will also be available and working with our partners in the community to coordinate a more robust co-response program. Additionally, we have included in this budget a Computer Support Technician. This is really kind of a hybrid position that came about to meet a couple of different needs. First of all, as we'll see and talk about a little bit later in the presentation, this budget proposes the elimination of our contract with Valley Media Works to broadcast and stream our meetings. Our plan is to use a product called Granicus to livestream the meetings. We're currently working also with, or in conversations with Charter to perhaps have that livestream carried over their cable feed as well. But we need somebody to run the cameras, and so one of the duties of this Computer Support Technician will be operating those cameras. In order to fund this position, we worked with the Engineering Department and a position that is within the Engineering Department, an electrician position that has been vacant for some period of time. And so we're taking some of the duties of that electrician position and the need for the broadcasting of city meetings and combining those into a single position that's being called this Computer Support Technician, which will in essence replace the vacant electrician position. So the Computer Support Technician will also do utility locates, which the electrician would have done, and also support the traffic and public space cameras that the electrician position would have also supported. So by working together, we're able to meet the needs of a couple of different departments with this Computer Support Technician position. Also, within the Police Department budget, there is funding to study police co-response, the intentance to hire a consultant to come in and work with the Police Department and area other partners within the community to study police co-response and to provide recommendations on how best to set up a co-response program within the city of Eau Claire. So just so everybody knows, because I didn't know exactly how my screen was going to look, I cannot see if anybody raises their hand, so you might want to just unmute yourself if you have a question and interject. So maybe I'll just stop right here. Are there any questions on this first slide? Seeing none, we'll jump on.
Jay, Jeremy has a question.
Okay.
Oh, thank you, Jay. Obviously, we were in touch via email on a number of these points, but I guess one of the ones with this slide up in particular that I thought maybe it would be good to clarify is there was some, you know, difference in terms of the language used to describe these positions and, for example, there was somewhere in the budget where it was Equity Diversity and Inclusion Manager as opposed to Coordinator, and then there was Police Social Worker listed instead of Police Co-Response Coordinator. So I guess I was interested in staff clarification on like the, on how to articulate the names of these positions most accurately in the community.
So yeah, in fact, we had a discussion today between Dale, myself, and the Police Chief regarding the co-response position, and I believe that we have concluded that that is appropriately titled the Police Co-Response Coordinator as opposed to Police Social Worker. And the Equity Diversity and Inclusion Coordinator or Manager, I don't, we didn't have any specific discussion about that, that particular position. I believe that both of those terms have been used interchangeably and at least at this point are probably, at least for the purpose of the budget document, that's, you know, that's how I think they should be treated. I see Dale just unmuted himself.
Sure. So just a little bit about both those positions. So the Co-Response Coordinator will be able, will be an individual that can do some direct response, but the goal or objective is for this position to be able to work with Human Services, the social workers at Human Services, as well as social workers in other agencies, and really develop a framework in which the Police Department is working in a much more coordinated and way with the social work community. The idea being that, you know, when there's a police response and the environment is safe and it's in a situation that's appropriate to get other resources there, how do we engage and elevate and activate those other resources within the community in a coordinated way? You know, one person can't do that alone. So there's a lot of conversation with Human Services and the social, you know, I guess the social work network that's there, as well as being able to bring in other agencies. So it's a model that is starting to be developed around the country in different places. We don't know exactly what it looks like two, three, four years from now, but the idea is that we have a person that, rather than just having one person that's doing the response, and this person might do some direct response, but the primary job is to figure out how to really leverage the community into these responses. And so that's why we're also putting some money aside to be able to have a study and bring in some experts to figure out how to design this and how to pull it together and then develop the commitments from our other partner agencies for that coordinated response. Ultimately, it'll be that, I mean, the vision for it is that this also then gets into the comm center and how things are dispatched and who gets dispatched and how, you know, how we coordinate that. So it, you know, this is the beginning of a, you know, of a multi-year, I guess, development in how we approach police responses in the community. But it starts with a coordinator and it starts with giving that coordinator the resources and the policy directions and the space to be able to bring, you know, collaboration and, you know, with other agencies to bear on the issues. There's also conversations between myself and the county that this isn't, you know, ultimately, we'd like to see this get big enough so it's not just within the city of Eau Claire. We have a dispatch center that dispatches, you know, for the entire county. So, you know, how does this work and what does this look like, you know, not only within the city limits, but outside the city limits as well? So that's, I guess, kind of the aspirational, you know, perspective of where we're trying to go and what we're trying to do with that and address, you know, what we heard from the community as an interest and it's also a community, you know, a policing priority and it is becoming a best practice. And as you know, we like to be on the leading edge of implementing best practices and we feel that this is the right direction to be, you know, moving the department in, and this is a good first step. In terms of the diversity position, that is, again, a shared position between the city and the county. The idea is that that position will be in the executive office of both the administrative or the county administrator and the city manager. I know in earlier conversations, there's been talk about it, well, it should be a department director. And I wanted to share my perspective on why I think it's better in the city manager's office than a department director. When the position is a department director, that makes it appear on par with every other department director in the organization. If the position is in the city manager's office, it has the ability to go into any department and basically with the backing of the city manager, be able to, you know, motivate and influence and bring change across the entire organization. It's not one department that is a peer with every other department asking the other departments to come to the table, but it's coming from the city manager's office. Also, by pairing it with the county, because, you know, systematic racism is not just confined to our jurisdiction, it allows for the same initiatives, the same efforts, the same work to be, you know, happening in both organizations at the same time in a coordinated way. With time and overtime, you know, it being a half-time position in either, you know, either organization, then there's also flexibility for it to grow and change, you know, with time to, you know, to have more hours or, you know, become, you know, fully independent positions within each organization. Again, given our budget challenges, Catherine Chough, the county administrator, and myself felt that this was a good way to start moving in that direction and provide resources that help not only just the city, but it also helps the county in a very coordinated way and have the most impact with all of the departments within both organizations. So that's a little background and perspective, at least in our thought process on why we're proposing both of those positions in this format.
Great, thank you. I guess, you know, it seems like the Equity Diversity and Inclusion position is more of a coordinator than a manager. I don't know what the difference between those terms are, but I know that, I like the way it's written here, just as feedback.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Okay, while Dale was speaking, I was able to figure out how to get my list of panelists back so I can now see if individuals raised their hands, so that's good. Okay, just some information on how we were able to close our funding gap. And, you know, I think the last time we spoke about the budget, we were indicating that we had a funding gap in excess of $400,000 and that didn't include any new positions. Obviously, we added or rearranged some positions along the way, so, you know, these are going to total to more than that, but these are things that we needed to do in order to get this budget into a balanced state. As I indicated before, we have, are recommending the elimination of the contract with Valley Media Works. We are proposing to delay the filling of the planner position that was created in the 2020 budget and delay filling that until July 1st of 2021. Part of the rationale for that is, you know, one of the things that this position was added to the budget to give the planning department the capacity to do is the participatory budgeting. And the participatory budgeting project has been delayed due to COVID and restrictions on in-person meetings. And the feedback that we had gotten from our consultant was that trying to kick off a participatory budgeting project virtually was going to be very difficult, so we are proposing delaying the filling of that position. We also had a retirement within the Fire Department, an administrative associate, and are proposing to reduce that position by .25 FTE, and that .25 FTE will be shared with Risk Management, so it won't be in the general fund. Risk Management has had a significant decline in their staffing resources. We used to share a position between Risk Management and Eau Claire County, and I believe it was about a year ago, maybe a little bit longer ago, the county decided that they no longer wanted to share that position with the city, and therefore that position has gone unfilled since that time. And as we discussed earlier, we had our health insurance rates decreased from a projected 2% increase to a 1% decrease, and that swing saved over $200,000 to the general fund. We also reduced the Hobbs subsidy to the 2020 level. Now, when we were initially putting together the 2021 budget, you know, there was a recognition that Hobbs may not be able to have, at a minimum, have spectators there for at least the first half of 2021 and perhaps longer. We knew also that the university wasn't planning to play hockey there. One of the large revenue sources we have at Hobbs is from concession sales, and without spectators there, we would not be realizing those concession sales. In addition, we weren't sure what to anticipate as far as rental of ice time. We have several employees that are employed at Hobbs and depend upon those revenues in order for, to fund, you know, basically their paychecks. And so we were anticipating that in order to continue keeping them employed and because of the loss of revenue at Hobbs, that we would need to increase the general fund subsidy to Hobbs. Since then, we've worked with Don Comte and the staff at Hobbs to both examine ways to limit our costs at Hobbs and also have had some conversations with the Hobbs employees about perhaps a need for them to be flexible in their work assignments. And we fully intend to keep them fully employed, but rather than working at Hobbs, it may, there may be a need to have them work in other areas of the organization so that the general fund subsidy to Hobbs doesn't need to be increased. So this is really going to be an active management issue for us throughout the course of 2021 to both limit our expenses at Hobbs as well as try to increase our revenues. But this was necessary in order to be able to do the other things that we talked about on the previous, on the first slide. And also, we changed some web filtering software we had from a three-year contract to an annual contract. So the three, it was just slightly more expensive to have an annual contract, but that saved the 2021 budget about $40,000 by doing that. Some of the challenges that we faced in this year's budget, first of all, as we always need to do, we needed to prepare a budget that complied with state imposed levy and expenditure limits and also the council policies on budget and fund balance. We also felt it very important to continue to provide competitive wages and benefits to recruit and retain the highly skilled workforce that is so important to us in providing services to this community. You know, some employers and some governmental units are not providing either cost of living increases and/or step increases, but we felt it was very important to do that, especially in a time where, you know, we're really on the front lines of the COVID pandemic. We also need to continue to provide the high-quality services that make Eau Claire a functional and safe community in which to live and work. We also felt the need to respond to city council and community commitment to promoting social justice and respond to the challenges imposed by a national pandemic. And we also needed to develop and implement programs and services that contribute to making Eau Claire more meaningful and fun. So a lot of different challenges, some of which were brand-new to us this year. And, you know, as Dale said in his introductory comments, we think that this does hopefully strike a balance between all these competing challenges and the fiscal constraints that we find ourselves in. Many of you have seen this slide before, but, you know, just as an overview to the budget, and we'll talk about it in some more detail, the status quo is not sustainable. Levy limits are not keeping up with inflation, and that means that we just continue to erode our ability to provide the services to a growing community. Revenues are not matching our service needs and demands. We continue to experience substantial growth in the community, and while growth in the community is good in a lot of different ways, it does also increase our, increase our costs of providing services. And we are challenged to maintain basic services. As you will see when we talk about some of the unmet needs in this budget, there are a number of departments that are requesting additional personnel. Their current employees are really stretched and there are some things that they're simply not able to get to with current staffing levels. We're currently making it work, but this is not sustainable in the long term, and I know that probably, you know, I'm probably repeating myself from previous presentations, but that is the fact. We are doing what we can to continue to both meet the current We are we are doing what we can to continue to both meet the current needs as well as the, you know, needs that we couldn't anticipate like a pandemic. But this just isn't sustainable in the long term. So some of the unfunded requests that we received from from departments that we were not able to include, and this is really going to be a snapshot of of those requests because there were many, many more. Information Technology requested a network engineer. Recreation requested an additional administrative associate. Community Services requested three positions. Survey Crew Chief was requested by the engineering department. The Fire Department requested paramedics. We had a request from the Police Department for a law enforcement associate. This is the position that we discussed with the city council when we were talking about body worn cameras. This is the position that will need to be added to the to the Police Department in order to archive the the video from the body worn cameras as well as respond to requests for or open records requests as other as well as other requests for the video. This the creation or the addition of this position has been deferred until 2022. Microsoft Office, currently, we are on a purchased version of Microsoft Office, but Microsoft is going to basically a cloud-based version of Office 365 that at some point we're really going to be forced into. So what that does is it shifts it from something that we're purchasing, a capital request, to a to a licensing, which becomes an operational expense. And that's got a cost of $110,000. Fire Department requested miscellaneous equipment totaling about $48,000. The Planning Department had proposed an energy efficiency incentive program at a cost of $70,000. Finance Department had requested some additional software upgrades totaling nearly $50,000. Human Resources had requested additional software totaling almost $18,000. We had, we really needed to increase the the rental rates for equipment so that our equipment replacement costs could be met. That was totaling $43,000. We're starting to fall behind in our replacement of equipment. And street lighting, it was proposed an additional $22,000 to fund electricity costs for our street lighting, which has been historically underfunded. Many of these items, particularly the software, are things that we our staff really depends upon to continue the process of of doing more with less, if you will, or by continuing to increase our efficiencies. So wanted to talk a little bit about our operating indicators and how those have changed over time. This graph is included in the budget book in the city manager's message, but I do think it's very interesting and illustrates how are the needs for our services and our service levels have increased over time. This is from 1980 to 2019. And we start out, the green bar represents residential parcels, which have increased by nearly 22%. You can see then that as we go up, our fire hydrants, which is kind of the teal bar, have increased by 77%. Library circulation has increased by 108%. Number of parks has increased by 157%. So some pretty dramatic increases in the the facilities or the infrastructure that we need to take care of as a city. But the final bar there, the red bar, is the number of employees that has decreased by two and a half percent. So clearly, our employees are doing more than they than they were in prior years. But again, that comes that comes at a cost. Some of that has been allowed because of technology. Some of it is is just through through efficiencies. But it also, I think, indicates that that our workforce is stretched and and some things are perhaps not getting done to the same level that they may have been in in previous years. So after adjusting for inflation between 1996 and 2019, the general fund budget increased at a rate of 0.9% per year. The general fund without public safety has increased at point, excuse me, has decreased 0.07% per year. Public safety has increased at 1.61% per year. So as many of you know, we are limited in how much we can increase the property tax levy to something that's called net new construction. And basically, net new construction is the additional value, equalized value of taxable property in the community, less any value that may have been removed through demolition. So the key word in there is taxable, because not everything is taxable. For example, if a new hospital is constructed within the community, many parts of hospitals are not taxable. So that doesn't count in that net new construction number. Our net new construction for 2019 was 1.92%. This means that the allowable levy increase for 2021 is 1.92% or roughly $700,000. About $600,000 of that goes goes to the city, about $65,000 to the library, and nearly $37,000 to the city county health department. So this graph looks at the period 2009 through 2020 and compares levy limit versus inflation. So the green line on this graph is the allowable levy increase. The red line is net new construction, and the blue line represents inflation. So in the early years of the levy limit, the the legislation was written so that communities could increase their levy by 3% or net new construction, whichever was greater. So if your net new construction was less than 3%, you were still allowed a levy increase of 3%. So this allowed the allowable levy increase to keep pace with or even even in the early years exceed the rate of inflation. However, in 2012, this changed, the statute changed, and that that floor of 3% was eliminated, and it just changed to net new construction. And so since 2012, in this graph, the blue line represents inflation, the green line represents the allowable levy increase, and the red line represents net new construction. So as you can see, since 2012, the allowable levy increase has been below the rate of inflation. The reason that the the net new construction and the allowable levy increase lines started diverging for us in 2018 is that we closed out a tax incremental district. So this gave us a little bit of additional levy capacity beyond net new construction. But as you can see, our ability to to fund city services has not kept kept pace with inflation. So some of the assumptions that went into this budget. So we, as I indicated before, we felt it was extremely important to continue with our wage increases. So we have those on both January 1 as well as August 1. We also have included step increases as provided for in our pay plan. One of the things that some of you may remember that we've done in the past is in an off-election year, in a in a presidential or gubernatorial election year, there are there's are additional elections and additional election expenses. So in in non-gubernatorial or non-presidential election years, we have used those those election savings, if you will, to fund one-time service modifications. But we didn't do that this year. We weren't able to do that this year because of of COVID. So we were using the off-election year savings to fund some of our increased general fund subsidies, which hopefully will be one-time increases in those subsidies due to COVID and that in 2022, those operations will return, you know, to their, you know, previous financial stability and will be able to return those subsidies to their pre-COVID levels. And as we've indicated several times, health insurance, a decrease of 1% in health insurance costs. So some of the key characteristics of this budget and the impact upon property taxpayers within the city of Eau Claire. Our assessed value increased by nearly $80 million. Our equalized value increased by nearly $395 million. Net new construction was about $103 million. Our property tax levy for operations increased by nearly $600,000 or almost 2%. Debt service increased by about $155,000 or 1.9%. The total tax levy, so debt service and operations, is increasing by about $752,000 or 1.96%. So less than a 2% increase in the property tax levy. Our non-property tax revenue decreased by 420, nearly $425,000, which is almost a 1.3% decrease in our non-property tax revenue. The lion's share of this, in fact, about over $600,000 of this decrease is just from interest earnings on our on our investments. I believe when we when we talked about in the preliminary budget meeting we had a month or so ago, you know, I showed a graph of what the interest rates have done with the local government investment pool. And and literally, when COVID hit, those rates went from, oh, nearly 2% down to 0.2%. And that's where we currently sit. And the forecast I've seen is they don't anticipate interest rates will increase until Overall, total revenue is up by about $380,000 or about 0.5%. So not a very significant increase in total revenue that's going into the general fund to fund our our programs and services. Our operating expenses are increasing by about $617,000 or about 1.1%. Our capital transfer or that use of fund balance to fund capital projects is going down by about $19,000. As I said, debt service is going up by about 1.9%. Total general fund expenditures are actually going down by $381,000 or 0.5%. The gross tax rate is is increasing by about $100,000 value. Will be increasing by about $8.25 or 0.58% in 2021. So one of the other things that I I like to show the city council, and I think that it's, you know, instructive when when we have conversations with people in the community. We think that, you know, property taxpayers in Eau Claire really do get a good good value for their property tax dollar. These next two slides kind of break that down by annual and monthly costs for various services that are funded at least partially through the property tax levy. So for police services, property taxpayers in Eau Claire pay about $30 a month for our police services. Not going to run through through all of these, but I just I do think it is very interesting, especially when you get down to items like snow and ice control, where we pay about $3.22 a month for snow and ice control or $38 a year. I think anybody who contracts for that service knows that every time they have somebody come out and plow their driveway or snow blow their sidewalk, they're probably paying close to $38 just for that single that single day of service as opposed to an entire season of service. So again, just more of those more of those fun facts for you all to share with people in the in the community. But, you know, we really do feel that residents of Eau Claire are getting a good value. So the total per year for cities, city services that are funded through the property tax is about $1,400 a year or about $116 a month. And so I think that $116,000 a month allows people to put that into perspective with what some of their other bills might be. And I know that the the property tax is so onerous because we get this bill in in December when we're and we have to pay it either by the end of December or in a couple of installments. But it's this big bill at Christmas time, and nobody likes getting it. But if you think about it on a monthly basis and compare it to some of your other household expenses, I think that it's a really good value for your for your property tax payment. So in terms of the budget calendar, so yes, we've distributed the budget to you all. Here we are on October 6, which which is the first work session. Our intention for this evening is to to simply present the budget to you, which we have now done, and, you know, answer maybe any overarching or, I guess, general questions concerning concerning the budget. On October 12, we are planning to hold a public hearing on the 2021 proposed operating budget. This is the public hearing that the city council requested we add last year to receive feedback from the community regarding the budget before council members may want to consider amendments to that budget. Because of the timing, it it's a little bit earlier in the process this year than it than it might otherwise be, but we needed to get it scheduled on October 12 in order for the the whole process to work out. On October 13, we're planning a second work session with the city council. That is to go more go through the departmental budgets in a little bit more detail. We're still going to try to keep things at a fairly high level this year, but we will go through those individual departmental budgets, and the city council will have opportunities to ask ask questions. On October 20, we have planned to have the third work session, which would have been a continuation of work session two, as well as council questions and discussion of possible amendments. However, you all are going to be very busy on October 20. That is the day that you will be interviewing the finalists for the city manager position. And I think that that given, given the amount of attention that's going to take each of you, we're proposing that we not hold that third work session on October 20 and give you that that evening evening off. Therefore, and we had it previously scheduled October 27, would now become that that third work session, which is when we would continue anything from work session number two, have council discussion about any amendments that council members may be considering. On October 30, that would be the date that budget amendments would be due to to me so that we can turn that back around as far as the cover cover memo and any any support materials and in time for this first city council meeting in November. That would be November 9, which we would be holding the public hearing on the 2021 proposed budget. November 10, we would ask the city council to take action on the on the 2021 proposed budget, and then November 24 would be council action on the on the property tax levy. So the amendment process, I would like to follow the same amendment process we have the last couple of years. So we would ask that if council members are considering amendments, that you have a conversation either with the city manager or myself, no later than Friday, October 23. That's, you know, so we can, you know, have a heads up. And if there are things that that we need to work with you on to research, that we that we have, that we have a period of time to get that done before those budget amendments are due on the 30th. As we have in the past, we would ask council members if you want to propose an expenditure increase in some area of the budget that you, you know, help work with us in identifying areas of the budget that may be of a lower priority to you so we can look in those areas for expenditure decreases. We are at our levy limit. We have no ability to increase spending in one area of the budget without decreasing spending in some other area of the budget. We will, as we have in the past, we will be sharing options, some options for budget decreases to pay for any amendments with the council members that are proposing the budget. As I indicated before, possible amendments can be discussed at the work session on October 20th, actually the 27th. Proposed amendments would be due no later than Friday, October 30th at 5 o'clock. And then staff will prepare the motion and cover sheet for review by council members. Those will be included in the agenda packet. And then copies of the motions will be placed at the council member's seat the night of the adoption meeting. So that's the proposed amendment process. With that, I would be happy to try to address any questions about process or schedule or if there are, you know, general questions about the budget. Both Dale and I are available to answer those for you.
Jay, it looks like Catherine has a question.
Oh, there it is. Yes, council member Emanuel.
Thank you, and good evening to all of our colleagues. Good to see you all and good to hear you all. Thank you for the presentation and congrats Dale on arriving to your last budget presentation. So thank you for this work. I know it's just a huge haul to do a budget, let alone all the other things that are on your plate. So thank you very much for helping us to get ourselves ready for 2021 as best we can. My question, I have a couple of questions around the EDI position. And it is totally fine to have information later, so I certainly would not expect an answer right now. I'm wondering a little bit about the salary for that position. I wasn't able to quite understand that salary amount in the budget detail. And then the level of professional preparedness that you would expect with that position. So is it a high school degree? Is this looking for some type of professional skill set? Associates, bachelors, et cetera? So I think that would be helpful because I think that demonstrates the skill set that this professional would have in starting the position. So that's one question I have.
Yep, we can certainly get that to you.
Okay, thank you. And the second one is kind of related. I know that there have been many community advocates who have talked about having a, trying to get the phrase correct, I've got it on my little whiteboard over here. Basically, a among liaison who would work in the city, which I think is very different than an EDI professional. And so I think really the spirit and the question, as I best understand it, is making sure that people who may not have English as their primary language would have access to using City Hall. And so I'm wondering if at some point we can talk a little bit about that, and maybe that's outside of the budget process, of how, what is our city's current capacity to handle different language needs that may arise? And how does that work across multiple departments? So not necessarily just one department. And, yeah, I think we just start from that. Because I think that there, I think this EDI leadership position, and I think your suggestion of having it in the manager's office makes a lot of sense to me. I think it's a really good and strategic first step. And then there's also this community voice that's out there of just wondering, how do we make this happen? How does this happen of making sure our citizens who don't have a strong command of the English language or have limited English proficiency, how do they access our services? Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions?
Yeah. Stunned silence, Dale.
Oh, Jeremy.
Yeah, thank you so much. Yeah, I think this is a great document. Thanks, everyone, for your work. I guess my question is about, I guess it's not something that I found language about in the budget, but maybe it's in there and I just missed it. But this, in your presentation, you mentioned the hiring a contractor or consultant to help study the police co-response idea. Do you, what exactly is the dollar amount for that? And how did you determine that amount? And I guess where can I find it in the budget? If it's specifically called out in there?
Well, it's going, it's going to be buried, council member Gregor, within the line items in the police department budget. So it's not gonna, it's not gonna stand out as a separate item. It's going to be within contractual services. There's $25,000 included for that study. The police, my recollection is that the police department has had conversations with consultants to get estimates of the cost of that study. And actually, the cost of that study is more than what we've included in the budget, but the police department is going to absorb that within some of their existing allocations. But we increased their budget by $25,000 for that study. Other questions? Council member Worthman.
Thank you, Jay, and thank you for all of your work on this. I really like where this budget is going. I think it, I'm excited how what it all includes in terms of the things that we've been talking about, but also pays attention to the fact that we've had needs come up and challenges come up this year that we've had to be flexible around in dealing with the pandemic and making sure that we're strong on the election front. And then, you know, really focusing in on our, you know, on the work around, on fighting racism, on making sure that we're focused on a community that is welcoming and embracing for all of our residents. And I think that this budget really starts us down that road. And I'm really pleased to see, you know, what all is in here. I think, you know, I'm gonna kind of echo Catherine's comment about the among liaison position. That was something that we did hear. And I think there's probably still interest in and trying to figure out how we can start that and try to figure out how that could be a part of this budget. But I do think that the co-responder, the start of looking at the co-response is really important and it's something that I voiced, and I know others have as well. I guess one of the questions I wanted to understand around the co-responder is, is that, is that position, would essentially that person be overseeing potentially other co-response positions that we could see in the police department in years to come? Is that kind of the idea of having it be a coordinator? Or, yeah, I'm just trying to understand a little more about what that position is so I can kind of share with folks who are, I know will be interested in it.
Sure, I'll start, and I believe Matt is on the call and can build on what I would say. So the, I think the short answer is we don't know completely. And that's part of why we want to bring in some outside expertise to help us design what that program should look like. I think, you know, with what we know now, it might be, it would be a combination of perhaps, you know, employees in this, in, you know, in the police department and employees that are dedicated from other agencies that, you know, are, that they're dedicated to that co-response concept and philosophy because they understand it's a net positive for the community if we can make that happen. And it's a net positive for their particular agency and it's aligned with their mission. So whether or not that means future employees and whether or not that means this employee supervises those employees really has yet to be seen. Matt, do you want to build on that at all?
Matt, you're unmuted.
All right, thank you. Yeah, just one of the priorities, I think, starting out, just to add a little bit on city manager comments is that co-responder person really being able to pull other existing resources that already exist in our community together to kind of come with that coordinated response. And so it could, it could go down the path as we build on this in years to come as far as kind of additional resources. But I think the next first steps and what we'll need some help with through the study process is identifying what resources that are already in the community, many of which are private organizations as well, and kind of making it more of a coordinated, comprehensive or complementary process in responding for these issues. And then also, you know, we find ourselves as the police department on the front lines and responding to these issues. We've responded to over 4,000 calls for service involving a mental health crisis in the last three-plus years. When we can take a step back from those instances, have those other resources kind of step forward and carry, deal with the individual struggling with mental health connected with services in the next step. So that's where we really emphasize that coordinator term to bring some of those existing things already together.
Thanks, Matt. Does that answer your questions, council member Worthman? Council member Emanuel, did you have another question? Or I see your hand is still up.
Sorry.
Other questions?
Oh, there we go. I apologize, it takes sometimes several minutes for my microphone to unmute. So even sometimes when we're calling for votes, I'm trying to unmute and it won't. So I apologize for that delay. I did have another question, and this is probably for Chief Bell around that administrative change for the support staff. And wondering what will, what was the old support staff FTE and what is the new one?
Yeah, hi, good question. What it is, is we have a full-time administrative associate position. And that, the person who holds that position will be retiring at the end of this year. And so with that retirement, as with all retirements, we work with the city manager, we look at the position and see what we can do differently. And so in order to make this work, technically, that position is going down to a halftime. But then we're bringing it back up to a three-quarter position, as you see it now in the proposed budget. And that additional quarter will be assisting the risk management position division to help them continue their work. Because risk management and our fire operations are, too many risk reduction work well hand in hand. And so it was a good synergistic approach to having those two departments work together in this administrative assistant position.
So another way to state that is the budget impact is the position gets cut in half in terms of the general fund, but it becomes from a full-time position to a three-quarter time position.
Thank you. And then is that, is that position going to be hired as a brand-new position? Or is this somebody transitioning their position to meet this new staffing model?
It will be posted and recruited with our usual recruitment processes. There's not an individual slated to do that at this point.
Okay, so nobody is necessarily losing their job because of the staffing model?
Correct, no one's losing, it'd just be a retirement. After 30 years of working for the city.
Well-earned, thank you.
We've got the, you know, the challenges with Hobbs. And there, we are holding, you know, positions open in other places of the organization and figuring out how to transition some people that have transferable skills temporarily to other parts of the organization that have open positions. Again, so we can keep, you know, consistency with, you know, our support and commitment to our employees while we work through the challenges with Hobbs and the revenue there.
Other questions? Council member Worthman, did you have another question?
Did, yeah, thanks, Jay. I wanted to ask about the contracts that we've signed for our fire and EMS services. And I imagine that there was going to be some positive budget implications from, you know, signing those agreements and understandings with the towns. And are we starting to see any of that come through at all? And is that helping us?
I know Chris can unmute himself and add to this. But in the early years of those agreements, it's really, it's really kind of a trade-off because what's happening is the hospitals are decreasing the amount of assistance that they're providing. And the townships are increasing the amount of assistance. So in the early years of that agreement, it's more or less, more or less a wash as the hospitals phase themselves out of funding EMS services. Then as we, as, once the hospitals are phased out, then there are increases that are built into those contracts that then start providing additional revenue to the city. Chris, you want to add to that?
No, that's correct. Maybe we're slightly better than a wash, but not sufficient enough in the first four years of this, of these new contracts. But as Jay stated, in the years to come, it will provide greater revenue each and every year.
You know, one of the interesting things that's happened, and I, I'm not sure where we're at on ambulance revenues exactly for the year. But interestingly, with COVID, one of the things that we found is our ambulance revenue was actually down in 2020 because there were fewer transports, fewer people going to the hospitals. Nobody wanted to be in the hospitals during, particularly in the early stages, so.
And there were fewer drivers on the road and fewer people, less activity that were causing accidents that would require ambulances.
Right, so, you know, interestingly, that, you know, one of, you know, one of those things that you might not expect in the middle of a pandemic is that your revenues from ambulance services would be down for the year. Council member Gregor.
Thank you, Jay. It's one of the things that I'm always curious about every time we present the budget is the, the value of the average home is going up sometimes dramatically. And I think the last time it was $175,000 was our, at least our estimate of what the average home was for the purposes of presenting our tax levy comparison. So I was wondering what value of home you used for this budget? If it was the same or if that went up?
No, it's the same because the only time that we adjust, so property taxes are based upon assessed value, not market value. And the only time we adjust the assessed value to the market is when we do a revaluation. And we are in the process of doing that, but it will actually be for the next tax year, not the current. but it will actually be for the next the next tax year, not the not the current tax year. So we're we're still using that that same 100 and 100 and, I think it's like $172,000 house, $174,000 house as the as the average home, even though, as you correctly point out, market values may be somewhat higher than that.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Other questions? Councilmember Bergy.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. I was just wondering, and I hope I didn't miss it, but was with COVID, were there any expenses with PPE or testing that was in the budget? Or would that be that relevant at all? Would that be covered by any carry funding? Or just if there's any intersection there?
Our our PPE expenses were pretty, were, you know, for the city, were pretty minimal. And many of those costs, you know, many of those items have already been purchased. And many of those costs have been covered through the routes to recovery grants through the through the state of Wisconsin. We really don't anticipate significant COVID-related PPE expenses on the on the city side of the budget. But I think that there are still some questions regarding expenses for the for the health department going into to 2021 as well for things such as contact tracing, not necessarily PPE, but contact tracing. And so in fact, just today, I reached out to the to Ms. Geezy and Ms. Vinnipal to to set up a meeting to talk about the 2021 COVID-related needs that are not included within the health department's normal operating budget. And and, you know, I'm sure contact tracing is going to be be a bit be a big piece of that. Now, what we're hopeful of is that is that the the money that the health department will or the the health department costs that are likely to be reimbursed through the routes to recovery program will be used to the health department that hopefully will be available to offset some or hopefully all of those costs in 2021. But we still need to do that analysis. Other questions? Councilmember Gregor.
So I was wondering about the the fee and license schedule. I know that was included at the same time as the proposed operating budget. Is there going to be a presentation about that? Or is that just kind of for for our our own consumption without a presentation or?
I was not planning to do a presentation on it. It was being provided for your reading enjoyment. And I think that what we heard from the council last year was a desire to have that provided with more opportunity for you all to to review it before we ask you to adopt it. So Ms. Basam got that pulled together and distributed it at the same time as the budget.
Yeah, I really appreciate that it's at the same time. I guess, is there the area that maybe I'd be interested in learning more about? And it could just be via email in the future or or at a future session is the electric vehicle charging fees? It seems to be the main new fee that have a lot of different pieces to it maybe. And just be curious to learn more about it.
Sure, we can get you more information on it. Certainly, that's a that's a new fee as we develop and put into service charging charging stations. And I know that Mr. Noel was very active in in calculating and determining that fee. But we can certainly get you more information about it.
Thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Worthman.
Thanks, Jay. Did we ever make the make some of those changes that we were considering last year around building, some of the building permits? I just remember there's a lot of conversation around. I just can't remember if we made changes on the fee schedule.
No, those changes have not been implemented. I think one of the things that's probably on Mr. Allen's, you know, work plan as a part of the recommendations of the Affordable Housing Task Force is to take a look at permit fees in in conjunction with with the Affordable Housing Initiative. But at this point in time, we have not implemented any of those those suggestions.
Yeah, I I kind of remember that it was it was being sent to that to that commission. Do we know what's happening with that? I I wonder if they've started meeting yet?
Let's see, is Scott on to talk about? Because they have an organizational meeting scheduled, I think, next week. But are very close to that. I don't see that Scott's on, I don't remember the name exactly.
He's coming.
Okay.
Go ahead, Scott.
Yeah, hello, yeah, the very first meeting will be next Wednesday, the 14th. Okay, we got all of our materials for that. And exactly, it's more of a organizational meeting. But that's certainly some of the things they'll be putting together as they look at a work plan moving forward. Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, thank you very much for your time tonight, your attention to the budget. So it's an important document, an important process. Feel free at any point to reach out to Jay and I with questions that you might have. And again, next week, then, we will do just a quick overview of each of the departments and talk about the any financial changes that are there and any operational changes. And you'll have opportunities then, obviously, to ask more questions about any departments as we go through that next week.
Yeah, just as Dale said, you know, please, if you have questions, feel free to reach out and be happy to, you know, get you answers to those, you know, outside of a work session. Or if you just want to give me a heads up of something you might ask at the next work session, I can make sure I have an answer ready to go.
Thank you, everybody, and have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody, have a great night.
You too.
Bye, have a good night.
This program was brought to you by a collaboration between Newsworks and the city of Eau Claire.